I think six o'clock we'll have to call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First for business at the public count if there is any. Go forward, new business then. Tom Madden with Yegi Colby is here to discuss final plans and specs for a wastewater treatment plant project that's in middle to Iowa DNR.
I got you on that. Good. Um, just give a quick update. I met with city staff today before this meeting. Went over where we're at with the plans. Talked to Jared, he was involved too. And the idea behind this is that on Thursday I'd like to have you guys' permission to submit these plans and a construction permit application to the DNR. We're at that point, we're getting real close to everything now. So I'm gonna leave these with you folks. I'd really like Jerry to look over them again and give me any final comments. And what this will be, this will be step number two out of three. The first one was to submit sixty percent plans and specs to the DNR. We did that earlier this year, we got that taken care of, it's been approved. Now we're gonna submit a construction permit application package. And then from now until probably right around the beginning of January, your attorney will be looking them over, the DNR will be looking them over, Jerry will be looking them over. And we'll take any comments that they come up with, along with whatever the DNR might comment on its final review. And we'll put together our bid set. And sometime in January, I'll come back before you folks will set the bid dates, and so on and so forth. So we're getting real close to this point now, this kind of final check of all the powers that be to give one last approval. So I'll be coming back Thursday to ask for the commission sent to the DNR. And down to Jim Wayne Wright will be your attorney with things over, so things are very close. The package I'm gonna leave behind here isn't the package, I will be bringing official copies on Thursday. That will be the actual still package. I still got a few architectural things that are getting finished up, but these are about ninety-five percent there. The plans I'll drop off on Thursday will be, say, ninety-eight and a half, ninety-nine percent, you know, minus whatever comments we get over the next month, so that's kind of where we're at with this thing. I think I, Ron, did I give you a schedule after that last meeting? I think I did.
Yeah, I have a schedule, I'm not sure what date you gave us.
Right. Um, yeah, we're, in order of time, this is with you guys' council meetings, we're probably about a week off from that schedule, which isn't a big deal. We'll still be looking to bid this thing. Get plans, specs out of contractors sometime in January, bid opening sometime in February, you know, just we've been tying around your council meetings. And we'll be right on track with kind of what the schedule is, the tiger ones coming from you, so we're getting there now. You guys got any questions?
No, I don't have any.
All right. I'll be back Thursday, and we'll hand it to Jen to get the official appeal to you folks, and we'll get them down to the floor. I'll leave these with you, Ron, if you pass bond on Jerry. Jerry, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Very much, Tom.
Alright, thanks guys, you have a great day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Uh, next we'll hear from Hampton Tree, we're representing to discuss tree replacement program and upcoming tree sale and review of schedule of council proceedings for the tree sale. Mr. Sanders, would that be you, or Mr. Williams, Mike?
Probably both of us.
Okay, thank you.
She told me I didn't give the scripts, I haven't. I guess we're just gonna kind of update, let's pull it on Herman Park, everybody's sixteen trees. Just put the bids out for loggers to come in to look at. And we're probably looking at half a day, maybe a day, just taking the trees out. And then the tree board members will do most of the cleanup. And then we'll be getting new trees planted in there. And the whole key is to get a good, healthy forest going back down there, or nice trees in the park. We got a lot of disease, or not disease, but, uh, the trees are sick and they need to have some attention to them. And it should've been done a long time ago, but we're getting this moved forward, they're dying and they're gonna be a problem. We put in, to let you know where we're at, fourteen trees last spring in six different varieties. So diversity is a big key here in keeping a good, healthy, healthy park coming. So if we can get this logging sale done and taken care of and done in the winter time, we'll give it a little shot in the arm for the tree board and for the city of Hampton. And we have the East Park project going on, we'd like to work on some things there, help with the swimming pool. And there's a lot of ideas we'll be picking around, at least we'll have some money to work with. And things going again, so it's on the road up.
Yeah, Randy deserves a big round of applause, he's been terrific on top end. We had fourteen or fifteen red seeders that we put a third row in a concrete park. And two of those survived. They weren't a good tree when we started, but just this week he replaced all but those two, twelve of those trees, so he's been putting a lot of good time in for us. We had somebody kind of cut across here and drive over, but they were the dead trees, so it'll be four when you plant them. But I think one of the exciting things for us is that we're hoping to have about maybe five thousand dollars worth of money, not from the city, but from one grant that we've applied for.
Yeah.
And also maybe up to three, hopefully, our target is hopefully about three thousand of these trees to be harvested from Herman Park.
So, yeah, it'll, it'll be a nice, a nice shot. There's a few of them that are in bad locations and it'll be good to get those out. And then, well, and all the trees down there are doing really well. I think we had one that died, we've replaced. Two that died, I replaced both of those.
And the supplier replaced those at no cost, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I would just note the handout I gave you is the resolution that will be on for Thursday's council agenda. Resolution, putting forth the process. It sets a date for a public hearing on the sale of the trees for December twelfth, about thirteen at six PM. The next page is a letter to potential bidders that was mailed out, I think thirty qualified logging companies. And then there's a notice of timber sale, which shows the bid deadline is Thursday, December fourth, four PM. Breaks down what they, what they will be bidding on, thirteen walnuts, three burr, or two burrows. And on the backside of that, which is not showing on yours, is a map for the bidder to be able to look at the site. And then a notice of public hearing that will be posted itself. Be looking for this information at the council meeting.
We, I had about a half an hour conversation with one of these logging companies today. From the looks of what we sent out, he was actually anticipating that we wouldn't be getting several people coming to bid on the trees. So I think about fifty, maybe we sent out to fifteen or twenty different companies.
Mark, if it's not a word, the board. We're in the good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good program, thanks, Randy. Alright, next item is review development agreement amendment between City Hampton and Burge Building Systems, originally dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand nine. This is an FWA, are you okay? You're being recorded.
Um, back in two thousand nine, the city entered into a tax increment development agreement with Burge Building Systems when they purchased what was Spec Three. And there was a couple of incentives for the project, for the developer. One, that there would be a tax abatement for three years on any increase in value. And when we set up the original agreement, we had timeframes in there. And now that things are in place, we've noticed that we're one year off on the abatements. And then after the three-year abatement is up, then there's a five-year tax rebate, TIF, tax rebate, that he'll be eligible for, where he pays his property taxes and then we rebate roughly eighty percent back to him. Our attorney suggested that we amend the original agreement to show the actual timeline by resolution. So what you see first is the resolution, and then it refers to Exhibit A, which would be the amendment to the tax increment development agreement. It just spells out the timelines for the three-year, one-hundred percent tax abatement shall be effective during the two thousand twelve, thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal years. And then the corresponding TIF rebate would be for fiscal years sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. It was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So it's, this is kind of a technicality, a formality of tweaking this, amending this original document to match what the real years are for the abatement and the rebates. Kind of a, you know, no big deal, but if someone ever questioned, you know, in year two thousand seventeen or eighteen, how many years left are there for rebates, it wouldn't quite match up unless we amended this. So I met with Brian Burge and gave him copies of this, and he understands why we're doing it and doesn't have a problem with it. I invited him to be here, I don't see him, but I'm really expecting to do it. So this, this will be on our council agenda for Thursday. Questions? Thank you.
Next is discussion of airport CIP submittal to FAA, can I ask you a little bill here? Hi, Bill.
Howdy. Bill Grady with Hot Topic Gas and Associates. It's that time of year, I think I appear before you twice, appear before you twice a year, once for the federal program, the state program. Well, those programs require a capital improvement plan to be submitted, and that kind of provides a basis of, uh, earlier projects, actually, applications for funding. Uh, tonight we're talking about the FAA program, the federal program. I don't know how many, probably haven't been to this before, but the airport receives a toll entitlement funds of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, which is basically set aside for the Hampton Airport. You don't actually get that money, it's set aside for the Hampton Airport. And then you can accrue up to four years of that money. And then that would be, could serve as FAA's participation in a project, if you're taking on a project. So you accrue up to six hundred thousand dollars and you're sure to be ten percent, so six hundred is ten percent, just ninety percent of what I, I think, six hundred fifty thousand is a type of project. It could be done with entitlement funds. After four years, a hundred and fifty thousand, that'll go away. It gets penalized for them, the FAA system, is that you lose access to that, but next year you have another hundred and fifty thousand. So you could professionally, I suppose, carry six hundred thousand dollars. Point you're at right now, I think our last project is a tangerine project. And we're past that, we have the full accrual of six hundred thousand dollars in entitlement funds. Um, in the past, we've, I think, Ron, we've passed out a last year's capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
And that's probably a good starting point. Projects we showed in there, actually, truthfully, some of those are shifted back through this year, we had some of the capital improvements, uh, previous couple of years. And council liked to shift things back for a year or two. But we've shown in there, the first project was just kind of a placeholder, reciting of the orange hanger, that's the only hanger at the airport. That was not really intended as a federal project at that time, we wanted to show it as something we were thinking about and pulled some numbers out of the air, just as a placeholder. But the other projects were shown as potential FAA projects. And that is extending turnarounds on each end of the runway. And the purpose of that project is to, at each end of the runway, there are turnarounds where aircraft taxi down to the end of the runway, they pull off the runway, do the pre-fluct checks before they pull back on the runway and they take off. For safety reasons, there's a prescribed distance from the runway center line where any object, including holding aircraft, should be located. Or turnarounds are too short that the aircraft can get parked beyond that prescribed distance. So this project will expand the turnaround so it can get farther than from the runway, so other aircraft can safely, safely land there. It's a safety project, I think that a lot of people who use the airport are questioning how much that's really included in safety. If they're putting on lines, it costs to do that. But regardless of the reason, it's a safety, safety project, I think we should certainly take a look at. I'm gonna put in there a pavement rehabilitation. We have done a pavement rehab project, mostly joint sealing, back in two thousand and eight. And so we're showing that a couple of years down the road. I think when we resealed the joints, you expect those to last about ten years. I think they're still fine, but, you know, folks have an improvement plan, and it's anticipated, but it's pretty expensive. So we didn't show that. We showed a forestall T-hanger. We just completed a T-hanger here a year or two ago, but my understanding that handle was full. In about three months, and it's continued to be full. Talking to Jay, I think you don't have a waiting list per se, but you do get inquiries, is probably the way it's gonna put it. So, you know, there's some, some demand for me to come in this place. But I always think it's a good idea to have a couple of empty stalls, so that you can accommodate, say, an aircraft that comes in over by, or for, or for growth, you know, or somebody locally purchasing aircraft, or somebody wants to locate here, you got space to put in, and they have to say, we're gonna have to wait two or three years to put in a T-hanger. So, um, so we show Bill at least that none of the forestall T-hangers are out there in a few years. Couple other projects we've talked about recently, anyway. The runway protection zone on the south end, the runway protection zone is a clear area off the end of the runway. It's kind of a pretty hopeful approach, it's for landing and pit area. Uh, we discovered here maybe a year ago that you only own half of that prescribed area. It's supposed to be a thousand feet of end of runway, you've got to be five or six hundred feet of floor on the property. The rest of it is across the property. And so we think probably a good idea to, at least give it easement for that remaining part of the runway protection zone. It would protect you from somebody developing something, building something that would be, you know, in conflict with approaches with the airport. You know, somebody put a building out there, then it would adversely affect the use of that area. I mean, the chances of doing that are pretty slim, but still, I think it'd be wise to take, take a hard look at that project. And then we had, as another project, maybe a few years, you know, we do yet, but the airport layout plan, this is kind of the master plan for the airport, that was updated in two thousand three. Final approval would have been in two thousand five, by the time it was all wrapped up. ALPs, the rule of thumb is that you should look at those in about five years, to see if it still meets your needs. If it does, fine. But after about ten years, it's probably part of that, probably anything that changed enough, that maybe it's time to update that airport layout plan, too. So, uh, we're suggesting that maybe a few years down the road, that we go around it, but the capital improvement plan also. Okay, I've thrown out all these, these projects. I guess I need some direction from the council, which three priorities are. I need absolutely nothing, if you want. You do have available time with money to start picking off these projects, especially the higher priority ones. And then, hopefully, yeah. Basically, my suggestion is safety projects come first, and I think that's a big priority, also. So what questions you have?
Didn't we leave this, when we set aside the, the last project, Bill? I thought we had left this, that all we were gonna do was just kind of skip the turn and proceed with the schedule from that point on.
Yeah, we did that, I think, two years ago. And I think both those years, what the project was, was a turnaround. And I think we've identified a couple of other projects, like the RPC and so forth. And I just need to, I think, look at where that might fit in with our projects. But, yeah, I'd be correct, I think that was, I think we had to slide it back to the year and then go from there.
How do you, how do you estimate a cost for the RPC, for acquiring easements?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty difficult. Purchasing land, as you know, can be highly variable, depending on how easy it is to get to public access. Yes. But in case of, if this required an S and E easement, which I think is possible, we'd prefer to buy it in feet. But, you know, you know what farmland is going for in the area. This is going in odd shapes, so it's probably more than the order that the farmland is missing at that. In addition, there are a lot of, what I call acquisition costs, not the cost of the land, but to serve a appraisal, review appraisal. And if you do executive funding, you're gonna need environmental investigations of some type. There's a whole range of those kinds of, uh, there's a phase one environmental side assessment that needs to be done. A lot of times, even archaeological surveys, you add all those costs, and the soft costs end up probably being more, you know, I answered. I, I've done a rough estimate on, on that easement. I'm thinking it's probably in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollars plus, whatever the environmental requirement is on you. Every time you add all those soft costs in there.
To put together these projected projects for this submittal to the FAA, we can be, to some degree, non-committal, but at what point do we have to commit to something?
Well, um, the way it works is the first project in the capital improvement plan, this is for fiscal year fifteen or beyond. So whatever you're showing fiscal year fifteen, this will serve as a pre-application for that project. The FAA will take that into account in their planning of the DNR. And in about October of next year, they're gonna fund it, they'll send you a letter saying, I mean, done the funding, this is your goal letter, you should start on that project. And you can back out at that point. If you back out all the way up to the point of actually signing a grant, I don't think that's necessarily viable. I would be pretty serious about, you know, that fiscal year fifteen project here. If you're not totally committed until you actually sign that grant, it's probably a year from now.
We haven't actually made a solid commitment to reset your tangerine project.
Nope. That project.
Since two thousand and fourteen?
Well, we've shown that in state funds, we just listed that in state funds, and that number is way, well, it's a bit, uh, we're talking something that can be put in the number.
I guess the reason I was asking that question, in your opinion, safety is first, which I think is true, would you, with different pools of money, I guess, over there, would you, would you place the priority of these turnarounds above the resetting of the orange hanger? Because it's gonna be an expenditure that we have. Where should we spend?
Well, I think the turnarounds are a safety project. And I think preservation of the hanger is maintenance. Maintenance is gonna lie too, on the FAA priorities, but I think safety first, then preservation of the hangers, then expansion after that. I know I thought you looked at turnarounds as a safety project.
I'd say that's probably self-explanatory, they want that first, or anything else.
Yeah, I think they would. I'm not sure that they would dictate that to you, though, if you came in and said, hey, we're gonna do this, this on tangerine, fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen, you know, look at that. Turnaround by a, kind of, no, it's pretty.
Mark.
Well, yeah, I, I hesitate to say, because every time I try to predict what FAA is gonna do, they approve it now, unfortunately. I, I think you try that, it kind of puts you out already.
Jay, do you want to come up with, do you have any input, or any feelings?
I kind of concur with Bill from, um, like you said earlier, the, the turnarounds, they're a safety issue, they, they. The, the turnaround would definitely be a safety issue, like Bill talked about. The amount of traffic that we get, it's not a large safety issue, it's not something that turn out you would use every day. But yes, as airplanes get bigger, faster, you never know what's going to come into the airport. The idea is to get other weighing aircraft away from the side of the runway, away from any, give them a buffer zone. You know, coming, large aircraft are coming in on, on GPS and ILS approaches that are, that are guiding them. So if they're off a little bit, and an aircraft is within fifty feet of that end of the runway, you know, you're, you can be in danger. The orange hanger, well, we have an issue there, a small issue. Of course, it's got to be, what, forty, forty-five years old, I would imagine. We have buildings in the seventies. The, um, the sides, the steel on the sides aren't bad, the steel on the roof, we're starting to get cracks where the passers are. It's a very low pitch, one-twelve pitch, I believe. And especially in the winter time, you get snow and ice that builds up on the roof and sits, and it will start to leak inside, drip, drips on aircraft, drips on the floor. Again, you know, you can go up there and maintain it, but then maybe time with a cop gun and stuff, and be your best. Sometimes you want to go up there and more, more problems you create. I was talking to Bill, it's a possibility that we could just do the roof as well on that building. And we can actually change the size, I think that's been there before as well for the hangers. So either one of those two things, as far as I'm concerned, makes a difference in the order. I think they're both projects that we definitely will look at within the next couple of years. Or the, the residing is something that will need to be done. It's foolish to look down, in my opinion, to look down further and say, well, it's called a new hanger, and we have, and we have another one that needs to be repaired, you know, before that, so.
Another consideration is when you look at the local match portion of each one of these, that's general fund money. Those are funds that are competing with other general fund expenditures, apartments, you know, police department, library, parks, cemetery, things like that. So if you're gonna consider what we have to fund with general funds and the importance of the priority that this raises to in your money. When do you think you'll have hard numbers on some of the improvements to the orange hanger estimates?
Um, I've got a ballpark number right now. If, if we did the entire part, side walls, roof, everything, I guess it'd probably be maybe a three hundred and thirty. Which is a little surprising, because, uh, you know, each stall hanger we built that project, uh, years ago, it was a whole lot more.
Well, I thought the little bit was two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, uh, for construction.
I guess I have to look it up, but, uh, yeah, but there's also payment, so, I think that the whole project. Basically, you're taking the steel off that's on it now, that's, uh, like, that's, uh, exposing, uh, the, uh, probably salvage out of it. And then getting new steel put on to the old one, making a fist, trim on, so forth, but it's pretty much a case of, um, that's ballpark, ballpark number I received from the contractor, the, you know, some project, uh, airport, uh, a while back, and it's consistent with the, uh, yes, it's very helpful.
If I might add, um, after we built the eight-stall hanger, it came to light through, Iowa Falls is looking at building a, I believe, a four-stall, which is coming up, I think, this year. I'm not sure if you know that. But, um, anyway, the airport manager at Iowa Falls had asked me, and I think Ron, I'd asked you for those numbers once too, their four-stall hanger that they're building this year is going to cost them more than our eight-stall bid back in two thousand, what was it, eleven? You know, so the costs have gone dramatically high. I'm just cautioning you against using the, what we spent for the new eight-stall hanger as a benchmark as to what anything else should cost, because I think the economy, um, played a big factor in that, apparently, and possibly steel prices, so.
We did receive really good sense of that.
When you think about Jay's idea, if we proceed with any of this, just to, uh-
I think that'd be fine. You know, that's, that's, he was, for that issue, uh, not only for grabbing the aircraft, but also for the internal, uh, end of that. Seeing that I'm still replacing and so forth. So that's the biggest problem. Try to control that number.
Could you give us an estimate, estimate for that cost?
Yeah, I, you know, just roughly, um, it probably would be a hundred thousand. The project, by the time you answer the soft cost, maybe it'll be a bit more, a bit more.
So I guess Bill needs some direction on whether we wanna not send in a CIP or send in a CIP and identify some projects in order, which one for two thousand fifteen, which one for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen of what he's talking about here. You need to know something tonight?
The, the drop dead date on the capital improvement plan is December twelfth. They wanted a preliminary copy before then, and they'd like a specific draft on that coming up. We'll, we'll actually pass that date, uh, to, to, um, so we can, uh, discuss it first. But, Bill, the drop dead date is December twelfth, so, I guess we gotta be talking about it, talk about it, and so, I'm, yeah. There would be a resolution.
Based on what I'm, based on what I'm hearing from Jay, kind of some of his questions, kind of sounds like the, at least the roofing in the orange hanger is probably more of a concern. At this point, I mean, I, I think you wanna get that turnaround out of the way, because eventually it becomes an issue of whether you can access more grant money. That is a safety concern as well, but, um, you know, around the table, what do you guys think?
I don't think, um, I think we should stay in the plan, in the program. Now, they just suspended a lot of money. Zero percentage, uh, set percentage that we've got on that project, probably, we have to just.
Well, our share would be ten percent of whatever the real costs are.
On, on, on the hanger?
So if he's, that's mean a hundred thousand, yeah, ten thousand.
What reason I asked is we have local TNA and state of six.
I think that was because this was a state, uh, CIP for the state one, right? Which is a higher.
As I said, we were just showing it to, it was kind of a place that, that was something out there.
I think we gotta look at our budget, because, if anything, if I see it inside the program, I have a same problem with that.
I agree from what I've heard. I think stating the program's a good idea. I think, you know, the safety part, I don't disagree with you. I just don't understand enough to give you a good opinion on that, but the roof on the hanger is important for anything that's in the, that is.
It's my understanding that if we send something in, we don't have to do it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, well, I guess it just makes sense that we should submit something, and it makes sense that what we have here is a good, I guess, basis for what we were planning to do. Unless at some point, you know, we do review that master plan, I don't know if it, if something would terribly, you know, change terribly or not, but I would say we would, should proceed.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of sending in another plan. I think we need to stay on it year to year. Um, to me, the roof sounds like something we could get to soon. And the turnaround's probably just for economic growth, maybe something we should continue looking at.
I'd like to see us take the same approach at the airport as we do with Jerry's opinion on the wastewater treatment plant, and involve Jay as well, and, uh, he's the person that deals with that day-to-day for us and does a terrific job, but, uh, we're waiting to hear on what his opinion is.
Definitely submit the plan, uh, probably the roof, but we, we do need to stay on this extending of the turnaround.
Can I throw some more mud in the water?
You bet.
And Bill, you correctly, if I'm wrong, um, the, the city portion used to be five percent of our project just as of, what, a few years ago? A couple of years ago, and I, was it a continuing resolution that they changed or the FAA funding? In the times they were with our government, I, I don't know what you wanna do, but one of the things that happened was they changed that from five percent match to a ten percent match. And, and that could well happen again. I'm not sure when the funding bill comes up for consideration again, um, but I-
I think I've got one coming up every other week for the next six to ten years.
Probably. But, Joe, I think that could be a very real possibility that the FAA could do, could change that funding match again sometime in the, in the near future or far future to make those funds go further. So when you're looking at a project, even though one project is cheaper, you know, when you're gonna utilize your match, you're gonna, you know, how many of those projects would we love to done it at a five percent match rather than a ten percent? So, uh, like I said, just throw us more, some more water in the water for consumer.
I, I would agree that a hundred percent. In fact, I would add to that, because the title of the program could go away and expire.
You're talking about that, yeah, I know that was a very interesting possibility.
The FAA's reauthorization and appropriations, um, were reauthorized for four years, uh, that included the title of the program. That reauthorization of the thing is up to fifteen or sixteen, and it's gonna take a whole nother act to counter this to, uh, create a new organization. And each year they appropriate out of that, and each year that's a different, you know, organization.
Bill, I guess I would suggest that, uh, you can continue to get some more cost estimates, and then, uh, I can work with you on, uh, put together something for the council to consider at their November twenty-fifth meeting, which is a Monday. We changed because of the holiday, Thanksgiving, so, does that work well for you?
Oh, yeah.
So we'll, you know, put together a CIP, a projection for them to consider on the Monday, the twenty-fifth. Give you enough time?
Oh, I'll point it out.
Okay.
Anything else, Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Uh, next we have a discussion of December council meeting schedules. Just wanna get everybody on the same page with that, much like we had in, uh, November for Thanksgiving. We'll have city hall closures, a bit of holidays, and, uh, I don't know.
The way, I think, uh, you know, regular council meetings would fall on December twelfth and December twenty-sixth, um, with the workshops on the ninth and the twenty-third. I think that we definitely should have the December twelfth meeting and the, and the workshop on the ninth. And, uh, what's up for discussion, I think, is the twenty-sixth meeting, uh, the workshop on the twenty-third. Uh, just wanna get some input on what the council wants to do. I, one suggestion would be we could move the twenty-sixth council meeting to Monday, the twenty-third, in place of the workshop, but, uh, looking for input.
Has, has the past practice been, there hasn't been one, there hasn't been meetings in the last couple of weeks of the year?
Right.
I think that's what past practice has been. Um, you know, I'm open to whatever you guys wanna do, um, whatever your, whatever your thoughts are. If you think we need to have a second meeting, we could, we could even move it up to the third week of December if you wanted. Or if you, if you have the nineteen.
I guess I wanna know if Ron knows or something, maybe, or we need to deal with that, or?
Well, we always seem to have plenty of items on agendas, uh, but, uh, you know, a lot of the things we're dealing with at the next couple of council meetings are, are things that are, you know, reports need to be approved for December first submittals, so I think, once we get beyond that, it should slow up a little bit, but, um, you know, if we, um, if we have a meeting, I'm sure we'll have items from the agenda, but if we don't, we, we put them off until the first day of the day we're in.
I think it's okay for us to schedule, uh, the council meeting on the twenty-third, and if there's a lack of, uh, any appropriate business or business that needs to be discussed, which is certainly announced and taken off the calendar.
It'd be certainly easier to schedule it and, uh, cancel it than to, um, try to rush something together at the last minute.
So no, no workshop that week is, right? So, do you wanna do that? Any objections?
We'll have that, uh, we'll have that on the council agenda for Thursday, approval of that December challenge. So we've been looking at the workshop on the ninth, meeting, regular meeting on the twelfth, and, uh, no second workshop, but a regular special meeting, I guess, would be on the twenty-third. Okay, thank you.
Under unfinished business, we have discussing draft for sure property owner recognition program. Uh, we did that at the last council workshop, I believe, as well.
Yeah, looking for, does anybody have any further thoughts on additions or deletions from this, uh, program, or? Does anyone wanna kick around, or? Sure. Who else?
Yeah, I'll take one.
George, I was thinking of maybe adding October to that list, just because October's a lot of rate moving forward. Just adding one, one month to it.
Yeah.
Another thing I was thinking too is, I don't know how much the hassle would be, but, you know, a lot of people take real pride in their decorations for Christmas. Maybe add something like that, or is that, that's probably a different area?
I don't know. What are you, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
Well, has the chamber in the past had, like, any kind of contest, Brooke? Since you were in, I think they had before.
Before they had, but they hadn't had it for a couple of years. I think we're going back ten, twelve years.
I think this, my own opinion, and you guys can do, uh, I, my general impression as a program like this is, uh, the scope is more, uh, geared towards maintenance, uh, rather than overall look or decoration of a property. I mean, you can do whatever you want, but that's my general feel, and, and Craig, this is your idea originally, and I don't know if I'm-
No, that's exactly right, Mayor, like, that was kinda what we had talked about, or how we tried to present this as a group, was that, we felt that there was a viable need to recognize those places that had replaced us, to repair or, uh, kept, and that, uh, kind of up and beyond, if you will, to make things better for themselves underneath, really. We just felt it might be important to try some positive reinforcement instead of, the other way sometimes.
I think it's a, I think it's a great program, and whatever, whatever changes you may suggest, that we can certainly consider. I, I, personally, I feel, I feel it's important that we get this, uh, squared up and approved and locked away before, uh, Councilman Icarus is off the council. His, his, uh, his baby, so to speak, rounded up, and, uh, would like to seal that up around the year he's done. But, uh, yeah, you guys talked about that, and, um, when would you have final approval or something like this?
Well, I think, uh, if, if that would be the only suggested change, if we could get that done, then we could, we could have a, um, for the twenty-fifth, whatever.
Okay. I, I mean, with regard to Val's suggestion of your strong opinions in favor or against, one way or the other, I don't know, you guys think?
I guess I'm more, um, leaning towards the direction Craig had to, for improvements for the property, that type of thing, as opposed to decoration.
That's how I would sit it with you, Mayor. I understand Val's point, it's a very valid point, but I think that we've done that in the past, or the chamber has. I can remember when they used to do that, the tour.
Maybe the chamber would consider doing that.
That's right. That might be a nice, nice thing to dovetail with this, to see what you can do. I'd also like to see if we give a certificate or anything to have those presented in the council meeting, the mayor hands them out. I think it's a good photo opportunity. We need to really recognize these people instead of just saying, "Here you go."
Right.
And, uh, they're benefiting all of us, and I may have thought about this, but I said, like I have, like I have said before, nobody's idea is good without the rest of us, because it takes at least four more people or three more people to think it's a good idea, so this is something we're all doing for the community.
Can I say we add October, and I think it's good, and there's really no right or wrong answer, and I think we go with this and see how it goes this next year, and if we need to tweak it after that, we do.
That'd be great.
Vic or Alan, additional comments?
I'm all on board with that, and I'm glad that Craig brought it up, and, and I think positive recognition is really important.
Okay, so, Ron, you can give those changes, please? Okay, uh, next is continuing the discussion of draft ordinance to amend off-street parking regulations and considering P and Z commission's discussion on that.
No.
Uh, basically, they don't have a whole lot from planning and zoning. They didn't have a strong, uh, feeling one way or the other. Um, however, the one suggestion that they came up with is, uh, if this is going to be considered, the draft that was, uh, given to them, uh, they said that they feel there's a need to have better definition implemented on, uh, some of the wording of that ordinance. And then the thirty percent rule that I brought up at, at that last meeting, um, seems to be non-existent in our current code book, so, um, that's, that's, um, moot point at this, at this juncture, so, um, but anyway, um, that's kinda where they were, pretty undecided.
You were talking no more than thirty percent, is that right?
No, there, there is no rule I brought up at, at a previous meeting.
As for structures?
Yeah, there's a structure theory or, uh, word next that says you can't take up any more than thirty percent of structure. Uh, but this isn't structure we're talking about, patio or concrete slab, um, gravel pad, um, you know, could be anything, but they, they just said, yeah, anything, but they would like to see some, um, definition, um, in place for that.
Um, and I did receive, uh, one email on this, um- And I did receive one email on this, on this matter, an individual just wanted to make sure that the word got passed along that, you know, it's obvious that during a snow emergency or snow ordinance times, folks have to park off the street. And he just wanted to make sure the council was aware that if there's a requirement that you have to now park on a path, that there's a lot of people who are going to have to pour the concrete in their lawns. And so, especially with all the discussions that we've had with regard to making sure that we're enforcing the ordinance, it's exactly as they're written, you know, there would be a lot of people who would be catching flack in winter during the snow ordinances. And discussion with Doug a little bit about that too, and, you know, he's under the impression, and I agree, that there could, I think there could be an official policy in place that, you know, gives relief to that particular timeframe, you know, so that we're not writing fines for people who are getting out of the way of the snowplows.
I agree.
As we ask.
That's been our attempt.
Right. So, but this individual's concern was that he and his family, as well as with many others in town, that he knows of, don't get caught in the drag, that's unintended consequences. Bob, did you have any input with regard to how to define what the...
Not really, other than, you know, like you say, as far as parking in winter. I guess my feeling on that is, is whatever we come up with, we make sure that the public knows it, and then we really enforce it, because there's a lot of times when people go and park on the yards for the full, I mean, for the whole winter.
For the winter, yeah.
Not just to get them off the road until the road's cleaned, but they'll park there permanently.
Sure.
I did have one call too, and it was a situation where it's a one-story garage here in a small driveway in front, and three vehicles in the home, so they just, they don't have room to park every vehicle on the cement. So they're hoping that we don't do anything that keeps them from, you know, to pull that car, the extra car off the street.
Yeah, I think during snow times is the big, the big hangover, so I don't think it would be a problem, put a policy in place.
You know, we announce snow emergencies or when that goes into effect, we announce that. Couldn't we just add an addendum to that, that parking will be allowed in yards and off-street parking? You know, to the fact that they're not going to be ticketed, I mean, when you call the press or notify the radio or the newspaper, you state when this is in effect, and you cancel it, or the PD does, or somebody does. But that would be when those times would end. You can't park in the parking after the streets are cleared and after the snow emergency season lifted, right?
Correct. That's the way that it should be, anyway, I guess.
So we, couldn't we notify them the same way that we notified that they have to get their vehicles off the street? But absolutely policies in place in that respect.
Should we build a cushion in the middle, potentially, Craig, like a 24-hour cushion after hitting the...
Well, I mean, yeah, with, you probably should, because you wouldn't have enough staff to go and ride all the tickets. Truck went down and you went right behind it, but, you know, you certainly couldn't say that, you know, you don't have any warning to get it off the street, you don't know when the snowplows are going to be out. But there needs to be some leeway in there. Whatever you guys decide is fine, but I think we need to incorporate, I think you're right, yeah.
And I would say a 24-hour period, in my estimation, would be fair.
So you're adding a section to that effect, to this ordinance, then?
Well, it sounds like we need to add an allowance for a 24-hour timeframe after the snow ordinance is lifted. Not sure of the, the placement of it, but we can look into that, yeah.
I think that would address the concerns a little bit, at least.
I think we're still going to have concerns from, you know, there are numerous campers and trailers and vehicles in backyards and properties for enforcement of, all of a sudden, they'll have to pour a concrete slab or gravel pads.
Those are the ones, those are the ones we're getting complaints about, though, aren't they?
Yes, yes. I mean, that's... That's why we're doing this. Yes, that's right. I'm just, I'm just, you know, just making sure everyone's aware that, you know, there's, there's a great number of them, and many people don't pay attention until they knock at the door and after the ordinance is done and in fact, so.
Or we could just ban all of those vehicles. I mean, there's some communities that don't allow any type of campers to be parked on their property. They have to find somewhere else. I'm not saying we should do that.
Well, you know, and I really would need to see if it's a point where people pave or gravel their entire backyard. Because then you've just got another glorified parking lot before I can support something like that. I think, I was pretty comfortable with that 30% rule thinking that applied to the yard, but, you know, even that's a pretty substantial chunk on some lots. Where I have a half lot, that is pretty much, if you have two lots for your property, that's a pretty good chunk. So it can be fair and equitable to everybody, but I guess I don't want to see how everybody's backyard paved.
So you're thinking of adding a requirement in there that limits how much of that yard can be paved in?
Well, something, I mean, wouldn't it be reasonable to have something? I don't want to, we want these things off the streets, obviously, but there's still, there's still vehicles in the equipment part of people's backyards that we've never done anything about, and they don't have any gravel or paving in there. But the one gentleman that was here complaining about his neighbor, I guarantee you, they'll probably have more in there now if they can just pave that yard, because they would still have a healthy access. And that's going to be what I want to look out for, that are already having issues, I don't want to add to their problems.
So you think maybe it'd be worthwhile to add in a 20 or 30%, or 30% maximum square foot of a rear yard?
Well, I think that we need to have some definition. I don't know what the formula is, Ron, but like I said, if I have a half a lot and you have two lots, you're going to have more area. Are you going to bring in more stuff to park in there just because you can? And what do we do with the rest of the neighborhood? Does that affect them?
What about, what about a certain percentage not to exceed so many square feet?
And I don't know, maybe that's a definite thought, but we've had it before something. I'd be curious to see what everybody else thinks. I'd be interested.
I was just going to say, at least with yours, not to exceed a certain number of square feet, that would limit the number of things they put back there. Because otherwise, they put three or four campers, and like you said, an extra lot with 30%, that would limit how much they could...
I'd be concerned about some of, like you mentioned, half lots, some of the small lots that we have, that people really don't have any extra, very good looking yard, and maybe they do have an extra, but I'm not sure how we address that. That's a tough one. We have a lot of houses and garages that are taking up a huge percentage of the lot.
I kind of agree with Diane. When they're talking about the two-lot situation, I think there should be a square foot limit. Yeah, they can turn their, use car.
Yeah, I find we're putting some limit on it, and if they wanted to exceed that, then let them come to council and ask.
The only thing, the way you have to look at it, is a guy with two lots and a guy with a full stamped lawn, you're going to have to go a percentage based on the size of that lot, of that lot. And, you know, you get to a point, you say, "Well, this guy's got a 30-foot trailer, and he's got a 20, 20-foot pad he can put it on." Something has to get, are you going to tell him because he can't, can't park it there, but he can afford it, but he can't have it? I think not. So it has to be a percentage of these lots, case by case. You could name a percentage and then go by how many square foot.
So similar to what we just talked, go by a percentage?
Yep.
Now, these are, that's for any backyard parking, just access to family. Because there's properties in town now that have stuff parked behind them, that don't have access to a family. They're on the side of the house.
When we vacate in that valley, can we give ourselves a whole new problem? I would say that's out there.
What are your thoughts on that?
I think it's not important, but just, just putting it out there. I think the, I think the goal is to, is to get some things cleaned up and get that. I, I believe that there's going to need to be some flexibility, and I think that it needs to be, along with that consistency, which I know can contradict each other at times. But I think officer discretion, a code enforcement officer discretion, at some point's going to have to play a role in this, whereas maybe we just come and give a permit with some guidelines that we would like, and then if either the officers have a question, whether it's PD or myself, we bring it to council and talk about it on a case-by-case situation, because we do have so many non-conforming lots in our community, because a lot of the zoning took place after most of our town has been constructed. And, you know, I think there's a reasonable approach to it, but like Bob and I know, we have to have some teeth and a few things to be able to enforce and stuff. But this is, it's a difficult task at best, where I think maybe a zoning permit process may be in order toward me to review each one on a case-by-case situation, or you may even have a public hearing, let the neighbors come and speak about it. Maybe, maybe that's, that's part of the permit process for something of this nature. You know, I, I think it's going to be too hard to put just a percentage to it, because on one hand, I lived in a property myself that was pretty small. My backyard was three foot, you know, three foot deep for the whole length of my, I mean, but then I had some side yard to where maybe I could put one of these pads, just go into a little trailer or something like that. I think it's going to be difficult. You know, I wish I had the perfect situation, but I guess I'd ask for a little bit more time, such like researches. I think we're too late in this season already to where if we can get anything done toward the course of this winter, and I think maybe we see what some other communities got going on, maybe. And, but other than that, I mean, those are some ideas that I have going through my mind at this point, like on how myself or or Bob's guys can enforce something like this consistently, and trying to do it effectively, I guess, without torturing our entire community.
I think you brought up a good point here a meeting or two ago, too, trying to cover all the angles, when you mentioned about, you have a certain depth of paving, I mean, and I know you weren't trying to throw a wrench into things, but it was a good valid point that, what if you go out there and just sprinkle a bag of sand or gravel, you know, and you say, "There's my parking." You know, and I understand this point completely.
Yeah, I think, I think definitions, at some point, like I said, it's going to have to be flexible, but it's also going to have to be enforceable. And the only way to do that is to get a true definition behind whatever we decide to do. But I think there's some processes that may allow us some flexibility, whereas if we have a, like, I approve zoning permits daily at times, you know. Where someone schedules out exactly what they want to do with their property, they want to do a patio, typically, in a zoning permit. They come in to talk to me, and I either approve it or deny it. But I, but yeah, I have, it's based on what's in the code. But nonetheless, it's still, sometimes those things get a lot more attention, better attention, to where corner lots are going to be different than a middle of the block. So there's a lot of things you want to take into consideration to try to make this thing work compared to what we've... We got to start, don't get me wrong, we're starting on this, but I do think it's going to take some time. You have to try to put this all together in a, in a way that's going to be flexible yet reasonable for our citizens, and yet still be our goals to, you know, maybe we start with some rules like we talked about, whereas are we doing this just for the winter time, or are we doing this for, you know, the scope of it? For in the summertime, you know, if someone's creating a big muddy mess and it's valued with the guy, the property next door, because this guy's parking out here when there's no frost in the ground, he's got a big issue, then I think PD's probably got the knowledge enough to say, "Hey, this created an issue, clean it up." But then again, for them, how do they enforce it and give a guy a ticket? Or they nicely approach the person, first of all, which is what they would do, and say, "Hey, can you quit doing this?" Well, you're always going to be that guy that says, "No, not, you know, no thanks, it's my property, I want to do what I want." I think, I think that's where officer discretion kind of gets involved a little bit with someone who... I'd like to get some more thought personally, and maybe, maybe start going to different ideas, or maybe choose shit when they can get together. And I know that's what we've been talking about so far, you know, but I think it's a lot deeper than, than what we think, you know. I guess that's going to come from over and talk to me in the surface.
Do you feel, do you have enough ideas and data from us to go ahead and formulate some plans, bring back to us? Do you need more input from us?
We're going to give us a few weeks to do some of that. I think, I think we understand, I do anyway, I think what you're trying to accomplish here, but I think it'd be nice to give us a few weeks to try to put in a package for you to where we can take another look at it. Even though we bring you something that may not be perfect, but that's, you know, that's why we missed you guys for the guidance. So I think we're going to have information of what you're trying to obtain, and yeah.
Could you just keep things good and you just do it or what?
You know, I got workshop to prepare, prepare for.
Doug, I got, I got to back up a little bit. I like that point that you made about, you know, they committed a visit with you. I mean, you're aware of what they've got, what the situations are, how that affects our zoning, how that affects our codes and the neighborhood. And quite frankly, as I stop back and take another look at this, this maybe should have been something that was part of a staff decision, instead of letting council let us getting in there and micromanaging or muddying waters anymore than we usually do. But I agree with Dick, you know, get some more time and think about it. I'd be curious to see if you, if you've got the information you need from us, bring your proposal back now.
Lou?
I agree.
Dick, you can?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the request for parking limits in front of Dr. Altis' dental office in one of the block, Third Street northeast, and again, considering planning and zoning commission's discussion on the matter. Although two...
Well, here we are. Okay, once again, here are the comments that came out of the P&amp;Z meeting. And first of all, there was a lack to take in to make recommendation one way or the other. The, the comments that came out of there is we empathize with Dr. Altis. That was one of the comments. Another comment was, it's been this way for many years. And then on a side note, outside that meeting, I got a call from one of the P&amp;Z members after the meeting the next day. And they advised me that, that a neighbor had contacted them and said there was an agreement, a petition that went around at the onset of when the dentist office went in that particular building, went and changed from church to a dentist office many years ago. And what it was, was allegedly, and I don't have this document, and we tried to research here for some minutes to try to find some proof of this document, and unsuccessfully to this point, where the neighbors all agreed that the parking for the dentist office would be where the dentist office. And that was a long, long time ago now. I'd love to talk to Dr. Alquies maybe to see if maybe he remembers such a thing. Or if this thing is fictitious or actually real, but that's what the P and Z member advised me, that they were contacted by one of the property. So those are basically what we came out of there, but, you know, uh, P and Z did have a, an opinion one way or the other. So those are just the comments that came out of the meeting.
I guess the question comes to my mind is, uh, is the person who spoke to the P and Z person the same? As the person who's parking intention in front of Dr. Alquies office from the other spots down the street? And I don't know.
And I don't know. I, I don't know. It very well could have been, I, I don't know. But if we're calling names, but.
There is no parking.
Just the, the issue is that there are open spots down the street that this person is choosing to park. Because it's gonna be a new park in front of Alquies office. And I think that's what we heard from that girl.
But it's not, it'll be cool.
No, not at all.
But I understand exactly that, that is what we heard.
See, there's no parking on the other side of the street at this point, right?
Correct.
And how long has that been that way?
I believe we just changed it.
Right, so it hasn't, so that one statement you said has always been that way is not true. Because we changed, it was changed to park, no parking, and that's why he's parking across the street now?
I would say, yes, I'd say you're right, yeah. I was, I was relaying what the, came out of the meeting.
Right.
Yep, yep, that's, that's something that's.
So that, that started that problem.
And what, and why was that change made?
Well, it's a narrow street and there was some concern of, uh, fire trucks getting through and emergency. Look, maybe what we should have done in hindsight is staggered some parking on this side and that side and that side. So a fire truck could get through, I don't know.
You got a number of streets that are just like that one.
Yeah.
Well, it's a unique situation having a business on a residential street like that, so.
Correct, and, and quite honestly, from the P and Z standpoint, is, is there, there are, uh, parking space requirements for on and off street parking. In the code, um, to address future situations, but it doesn't help us in that, unfortunately.
Is there space in back to park?
Well, isn't there employees parking there, is that what he said?
I think if he had anything, Jim, I don't think there was a lot of room.
I think they had like three spots and one of them might even been a, like a neighbor's.
He talked about Norm and Eileen wanted to be able to do something, I can't remember just exactly what he said, but. Spots are at a minimum at best. Plus his own vehicle.
Right.
I think actually Craig, most of the time, I think he's, he wants to work, he's close by.
Oh, does he, I don't know.
Anytime Dean's wife just wants to work, we have about three blocks away.
I didn't exactly know what else.
I think it's the other employees that park there. You would see at least one or two others.
Any direction? Any use? And when he spoke, we see where Dr. Alquies, he used requests on three spaces. If we did any, I don't see the need to go to three spaces there. There's, there's a little inset, um, pour, of poured concrete there that lets those cars get off the street by two or three feet. And, um, that's really only big enough for two. So if we went any direction with this, I, I would, I would say two spaces would be, if we want. For the special business, they. Steve, what do you think?
I'm thinking, where is it gonna end? Where will we go from there?
That's, that's kinda what I'm thinking. It's one of those things that if we do this, then what's the next one gonna be? I mean, I, I'm sorry for Dr. Alquies, but, um. My opinion is, it's the way it is.
Well, and whoever allowed that to go the way it is, back when, when he moved in there. Needed their head examined, because that wasn't a good situation to begin with.
And the patients are aware of this, the ones that are going there, they're aware of the parking issue. And they continue to go to him, I don't think that's gonna, you know, steer them away from him.
Plus now, he's kinda semi-retired now, if I remember correctly, he's not open every day.
Right, I believe that's true.
Yeah. So, you know, to what degree is it for the guy? I mean, you know, is, is he still got what's considered a full practice? Or is he, some of these guys, they just don't take on when they get to a certain point. I know a lot of dentists don't take anybody else on, because they just don't wanna fill their day up anymore. And I know, when I talked to him a couple of years ago, and I don't know how much has changed since then. Is that he just kinda wants to do when he wants to do it. And that's something we all hope to get to someday. So I don't know if two slots are enough, or if we do that, then we're gonna have some guy down the street that's got a, got a home business. And wants to designate some parking for him. Where do you think?
And with you saying that, I mean, if this plan is, you know, to retire soon. Maybe we wanna, you know, steer people away from using that location for a business. And hopefully when he's done, it can go back just to, for a residential.
But if that one is a church, it's not on the roll for anything other than that. Should have been looked at at that time.
Oh, I don't think we wanna speculate on Dr. Alquies retirement.
No, I don't either, but I would, I would just bring it up.
Right, no, I, I, I understand.
Because here we go, we designate two or three spots, the guy rocks the door and goes home.
Well, and honestly, I think any change in, in property ownership or use of the business would, would instigate the, or would bring up the, the new P and Z rules anyway. Uh, I would imagine, uh.
If it, if it's really, if it, if it, there has to be a year, but.
Well, 'cause I, yeah, I was gonna say, as I understand it, it, I mean, it's kind of grandfathered in now. Um, whereas any kind of change, I would think that would trigger.
It would have to be another dentist office to write in there right away. Otherwise.
Okay. So, I'm kinda hearing nothing at this time? All right, thanks Doug. Update on disposal vacant city hall lots, uh, located at 208th Street Northwest and 409 First Street Southwest? Oh, I'm sorry, actually, sorry, uh, we're back up there. Let's discuss First Street and Highway Three traffic signals on stop signs.
We continue communicating with the, uh, Department of Transportation, Roger Park up there. Um, he's, he'd asked, uh, a few questions pertaining to the current setup. At what point would we, uh, be open to doing anything, um, as far as, uh. Temporary repairs or refurbishments or anything of that nature? And at this point, I advise him to have nothing budgeted. Um, and we'll be talking about it at budget time, or invited them to come at budget time to, to. Enter into the conversations with us as far as funding, if the state would be willing to assist with any funding. Um, what the different options and scenarios are. Um, and then at this point, um, I advise them that, you know, we're gonna keep a four-way stop for right now. Um, I advise them that, uh, it won't work, it won't be reliable for us to try to put it on a four-way red flash at this time. Um, because we know it won't be reliable, because we've tried to put new parts in. Um, and we're kinda tired of it at this point from that. Um, so really, uh, their thought is, is to remove the four-way stop that's in the center of the intersection. But I wondered if do that, there are a couple of signs that would need to take place. And, um, some of which the DOT would, would participate with, some of which the city would participate with. And I'm not fully sure, you know, as to who. And, uh, and requesting that they assist with it, since it is. I really won't have a lot of it, but then, I think at budget time, we'll, we'll have more discussions and have a process and everything.
I mean, we encourage you to do public.
Yes, yes, definitely encouraging the public to, you know, let everyone know what they thought of the potential of the transition.
Did you have discussion about the potential of a single four-way box depending from corner to corner? Does that sound like the DOT would support red, red lights from each direction?
We've asked them that at some point, that may be something that's possible, they're very expensive as well, but, um, definitely a possibility at some point. But to do something like that right now, um. You know, I can always ask them, is that something you wanna look at doing right now?
We already did.
And, and, yeah, we, we.
We did, and we asked, and it wasn't something we're, we just didn't do it.
Right. I mean, we haven't gotten any specific.
Nothing to concrete, yeah, so.
I think there's a lot of discussion that's been had, but a lot of it's just standing on.
So the additional signs you were talking about would be to help someone who resides a semi, you can't see to that side.
Right.
To be alerted that there is a four-way stop.
The discussion, uh, and what's kinda being talked about is on the arms themselves, how to stop signs on the arms themselves extended. Um, in the middle of the intersection as well as, um, so, uh, prepare to stop ahead signs even further back on the highway side. Uh, more so than looking at the stone. And then for the city, I, which I agree to, which we would order a couple of signs. To put stop ahead signs on First Street a little bit farther down about a half block. And new signs just, uh, four-way stop ahead, basic way, there's not a prepared stop ahead. And those three choices. But that's what we would have to do in order to take that. And I know we're trying to get that possible, but. Fairly soon, as what we have at the place right now is, is not gonna use the stone.
The comments that have come to me, I had one comment from a, you feel that Highway Three should be passed through. But very, very heavy favor of continuing four-way stops.
I received one comment, city hall members, absolutely no three-lane, in their opinion.
I've had several comments as well that, that say the four-way stop is working well. And some had one gentleman come up and tell me that he thinks it works better, just because it regulates the flow of traffic better. We aren't having this green light, have a half a dozen cars go by and block up on the street, side streets. And from my own experience driving the bus, it's not been real bad. Yeah, 'cause first guy there, and right away they just go around the corner, just like they're supposed to. You know, when it first went up, I seen a lot of weird stuff. I seen guys go shooting through that never touched a brake. And, but I see that everybody's pretty much gotten used to the four-way stop. And I've had a lot of comment on the three-way, the three-lane, they don't like the three-lanes.
Yes.
I, I was just wondering, the senior center, has anybody commented? The comments I've heard is the concern about not having a walk light and not being able to get across, uh, in time. And I didn't know if anybody at the senior center made any comments of anyone in a walker or anything of that nature, being afraid to get it, make it across.
No, Brock, I haven't heard a single word out of mine.
Was that Jim's comment?
Uh, and that came out of, uh, Senator One, uh, some of the people in Senator One.
I agree with your point.
They were concerned about just people being afraid, and so I was wondering if there's any, next time you're senior. Not that we wanna ask that, because there's nothing to do about it.
Well, I think you do wanna ask, I mean, we, we wanna encourage.
We need to know it, everyone I've heard, the three-way, I brought up at Rotary Club the other day when I spoke, they said three-way. But that was the, the two comments that came out was afraid of pedestrians. But everyone else said it's great, positive remarks on all the other side streets getting out. The now, at least you can get out of all of the other streets off that, because there is stopping in intervals of that.
Traffic seems a lot more fluid.
That, that's what, everyone has been positive except pedestrians.
You know, another thing that I've seen some cities do, uh, they do this heavily in Wisconsin, and I've seen it now in some northeast Iowa towns. Is that they will put these tall, skinny, narrow signs at these pedestrian crossings that are fluorescent orange. And say, uh, Iowa code dictates pedestrians have the right of way. These, they must have an adhesive that sticks into the pavement. If a vehicle hits them, it'll flop over and come back up, but, um, it's, it catches your eye and lets the person stopping, the stop sign know that. Even though you're stopping, you still have to wait for any pedestrian that's crossing. Vehicle does not have the right of way, so.
And in Boone, in, in their downtown retail district, they have pedestrian crossings in the middle of the block. Not anything to do with an intersection, they have those marked and painted and with signs so that, 'cause let's say they're quite long blocks. And so that, you know, so maybe there is something like, you know, putting some kind of signage and then painting something on there too. So that it really stands out that, yes, pedestrians do cross or can cross here.
And have the right of way.
Oh, exactly, because that's what the sign that's, I think in Boone says, like pedestrians have the right of way, like you must stop and let them go.
Shouldn't people know that, though, isn't that the law?
Yeah, they should, it's not.
You'd be surprised if people don't know.
Right, Bob?
He says, no, excuse me.
Doug, is that something you can find information on, on those, most like you?
Oh, I think so, yeah, I think we have a ton of different options available out there, but we didn't do that.
Good discussion.
Are there walkways painted there right now? That takes a while.
Yeah, there's crosswalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I think I've jaywalked there quite a few times, we can talk later.
How long ago was it?
Moving on from that discussion, uh, uh, now we'll have update on disposal of vacant city hall lot at 208th Street Northwest and 409 First Street Northwest.
Okay, I handed you a couple of draft resolutions regarding 208th Street Northwest and 409 First Street Northwest. Previously referred to as the Urbina Lot and the Mulder Property. Proposed, uh, basically these would, uh, set out a date for a public hearing and, uh, sealed bid on the properties. We would advertise that we're gonna have to take sealed bids, having the bid letting, um, offers presented to the city council on December 12th at six o'clock. The bids would be due by December 12th at four o'clock. And the second to last paragraph on the first page, any and all objections, uh, let's see, highest bid shall be received. After which, the option of increasing equal or lesser eligible bids will be offered to eligible bidders in attendance at the public hearing. For consideration of approval by the council. In other words, whoever submitted a written sealed bid would be eligible at, at the public hearing to increase their bid. Um, and then the council would consider the highest bid at that meeting. Is everyone okay with that situation?
If, if we reject a bid, do we have to have a just reasonable order, can we just be a lateral way, so you know what?
It says, the council reserves the right to reject any and all bids. Also, be thinking about a minimum bid on these properties. Uh, because if you don't want a minimum bid and someone offers you a dollar, you'd be prepared to sell for a dollar. But, uh, be thinking about a minimum bid and that, that blank there to fill in. So, um, when we get this on the council agenda, I'll be looking for some input on what you wanna see for a minimum bid.
And you know how much, I mean, you could find out how much we have in it.
We will not yet.
So, right, but, I mean, I, I mean, it would be nice to know.
Yeah, we.
What, how much?
We can get that. How much we have in these properties, estimate?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think I already have it.
Okay. So, this is kinda what we're looking at. And everybody on board with the structure, how we're proceeding?
Just one question, you said like they could increase the bid. So you could have a bidding war go on theoretically? I mean, is it more than one person, so you could, we're basically auctioning it off during the public hearing?
As long as you had a bid submitted.
Right.
Right.
And, yeah, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure, if someone could give a count, you know, another week, you could go back and forth.
We can do that way.
Not just one bid, or you cut it off after the one?
Well, that's an option. Is that we could take sealed bids and you consider the highest bid, period. Not let them, anybody raise it, they have to, they have to put their high bid in that sealed one. That's one option too, so.
Is it be done at this rate before?
No.
Okay, anything so?
No.
Well, if we didn't want it to turn into an auction, we could have it be, uh, one more sealed bid. By those that are present. If there's a concern about the time, but I don't think that's gonna be a big deal.
The only thing there might be a game show, then, I'm gonna bid one dollar more than what you did. To get it, if you're, if you're putting an end to it.
No, that's what I'm saying, the second go-around is. No, that's why I'm saying the second go-round is a one more sealed bid.
Oh, sealed bid, okay.
One more sealed one. From go to present.
Should we do like a certain amount, dollar amount, or something? Yeah, I think get more money out of it. I'd say we'd love that.
I don't have a problem with that, I guess. I, I don't think it's a running problem. And if we can, if we can get a little bit more out of it.
And as the chair, you could probably, you could put a time limit on it too. I mean, and that's it, I don't think.
Yeah, I got the ability.
That's right, not, not tonight.
So.
Auctioneering.
And finally, discussion of city hall software licensing, making up some support channels.
This should only take another hour or so, just barely.
And did you take one of those trees out of the park to make all this paper?
This, this is a breakdown of a proposal from Tyler Technologies to give you an idea of, on the, towards the bottom, there's the GT maintenance numbers. That's what we currently have, and that's what we currently take, about $6,000 a year for those items. The new software is called Fun Balance. And so those items are listed in the faded part, which you, I'm sorry, apologize for the copy, not real dark. And then corresponding savings per year. The only one that you wouldn't save on is Tyler U. It's an online university where employees can go online and, you know, look up how to, how to do a certain report or things like that at their leisure, so.
Excuse me, is that system support under the GT maintenance, is that like, like you had phoned into them?
Yes.
Yeah, so the Tyler U really replaces that, and that's where you see a lot of savings there, I think, too, is because you don't have that, that personal support.
Yeah. And you can do it on your own time, and, yeah, you're not bothering them. Yeah, so. And then on the third page is the actual quote, looking at one-time cost for the pervasive D dot eleven, five users, $270. Then training cost, this is an estimate, he's estimating 35 hours. In talking with another community, they didn't use near 35 hours, but, and once you go live, there's no more training, you're just on the support, so. I would personally try to, you know, give as much training as, as we felt necessary, but not overdo the training. So if the guy given the quote felt the maximum would be 35.
And that's, like, as a group, you would probably?
Yeah, let's train as a group.
Right.
Yep. Or as much as we could, someone can have the, the customers, but, yeah. So the, the total on the, on the next page, $9,381, that's not necessarily what it costs us. That's, that's including the, you know, training, which is unknown. And then the $4,736 is, is a cost that we would have incurred had we had the GT product, so. Look this over, you know, if you have any questions, we'll, we'll discuss it at a future meeting. But just wanted to get it in your hands, so you can start comparing and, you know, we're, we're looking to make the conversion, it's just whether, you know, how soon do we do it? I think it's something that's inevitable, and I think it's wise to go with the same company that we've been with. My staff is pleased with the support that we get, and if we went with a completely different company, I'm thinking we have to pay for the initial software and it would be even worse, so, so.
No, I think it was very reasonable. And just one last question, you're on the web-based training, do you pay as you go, or do you, you would have to pay that? Yeah.
As you go, which I think he talks about a lot.
I think it's very reasonable.
That, that's all.
Will you plan on making this up for the council?
Uh, before the end of the year.
Yeah, I agree with Jim, it just makes sense.
Yeah, by the end of the year.
Anything else on that item? Anything else we haven't talked about?
I think we've talked about.
Anything else from the public? Nothing? 737, hold your.